Six o'clock. Ready? I'm gonna call this meeting to order. If you are able, please stand for the pledge. Okay, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Alabas.
President.
Hopkins.
Here.
Ingalls. French.
Here.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, here. Motion carries. Or whatever, there's not a motion, sorry. I'm a little over enthusiastic today. Next, we need to approve the agenda as amended to include a sign request from the First Presbyterian Church.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended to add a sign request from the First Presbyterian Church under the city manager's report.
Support.
Councilmember Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingalls. French.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, now the motion carries. Okay, now we have time for public comments. You have three minutes. We ask that you state your name and state whether or not you are a resident of the city. And if you're a visitor, please let us know where you are from, we always like that. And three minutes, and in terms of everyone else, I haven't, we haven't had any issues lately, but remember to be, treat each other as neighbors and be respectful. And that is all. I will keep the timer and I'm gonna do this with like, you'll see. Anyway. Like I used to say in school, share time equally. Thank you, okay. Opening public comments. Hi, Art.
Hello, my name is Art Stevens and I am a Cadillac resident. I also understand that you don't have a chance to interact during this period, but what I was checking on was, as these, the appointments came out for the mayor and the two council positions, and going back and reviewing those meetings as well as the minutes in the media, there was, there was quite a bit of talk about following the charter, which was excellent, and there was talk about the fact that the charter says that those appointments, that the, those appointed would serve until a successor was elected for the remainder of the term at the next ensuing citywide election. And there's a reference, by the way, online for the city's website. It references if there's state laws that fill that. And so, they do reference MCL 201.37 that basically says you follow the city's laws or charter. So, at that meeting, I know between the city attorney, they were specifying about the elections. I know the ones that were being voted on on November 4th are for a four-year term from January 1st for four years. If we follow on the charter, they only had those, the appointments were through the election. I know it's only for two months, but usually, like, if one had been a two-year and two-month situation, it's through election and then election day whoever wins takes over. So, it seems that, from what the attorney and council talked about back then, it's been different. I do think, regardless of what happens, I know a lot of people have been asking me about elect, if there can be some clarification, when does the new, is it, when does it take over? Do, does the appointees stay on till the December 31st? Or is it after the election, the whoever won's taking on? So, that was mainly wondering for possibly public comment. I did understand by one council member, he's not here right now, but he mentioned that you may have had a legal opinion on this topic, but this might be something that's worthy to let the public know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else, let's move on to our PFAS update.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Just a couple of bullet points I got from Jeff. Jeff is not with us, our utilities director, this evening. The first one, he wanted to mention that PFAS was recently measured in our wastewater plant effluent. That's the water that's going back into the environment. PFOS was at 1.5 parts per trillion and PFOA was at 2.1 parts per trillion, which are both very much well below any, any limitations that are, that are allowed. Additionally, drinking water and PFAS samples have been taken and sent, sent into our lab. These samples are to establish a baseline. The baseline could then be used in the future if PFAS contamination is ever discovered in our drinking water. And this is all related to the nationwide PFAS lawsuit that we are trying to join, or basically be, be on the list if there's a phase two. So, we have to establish that base.
Can I ask, do you know what the acceptable numbers are? Cause like, just, I don't know what, how low 1.5 is relative to what it's hard without Jeff.
Drinking water.
No, for the effluent.
Yeah, right, that's what I'm talking about. So, so I believe the drinking water standard is either a four or a 12. So, and we're, again, we're talking about parts per trillion, and I, I don't have that.
And this is not drinking water, this is?
No, I mean, this is, right. And so, the, the standard would be above what I just mentioned for, for non-drinking water. But we are below even the drinking water standard is, as I understand it.
Okay. And that's been pretty stable.
Pretty stable, yep.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, how about the consent agenda, which includes minutes from the regular meeting held on October 6th?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls. French.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, we have a proclamation this evening. We have some visitors here to, if you want to, I'm gonna stay seated if that's okay, but you can come stand right here if you'd like. This is a proclamation for family court, oh, and would you tell us, tell us your name for the?
Teresa Winkler.
Teresa Winkler. Protective Parents, Michigan?
Yeah.
Okay. Proclamation, Family Court Awareness Month. Whereas, the mission of Family Court Awareness Month is to highlight the need to prioritize child safety in family court as one in three families in Michigan are exposed to domestic abuse. Whereas, an estimated 58,000 children in the U.S. are ordered into unsupervised contact with abusive parents each year, resulting in almost 1,000 children in the United States murdered during visitation with an abusive parent since 2008. In Michigan, 39 children have been murdered by a parent since 2008 during divorce or custody disputes, including six-year-old Rowan Maury Poise, did I say that right? Of Caldonia, Michigan in 2024, and three-year-old Dylan Thebow of Kent County in 2021. Whereas, Rowan and Dylan's families have been working to increase awareness of child safety issues by promoting Family Court Awareness Month and have been honoring their children's legacy by introducing legislation to improve the safety of missing children in Michigan and helping improve Kent County's response to domestic violence. Rowan's Act was introduced in the Michigan House of Representatives this year by Angela, I think it's Rigas, who represents portions of Alleghan, Kent, and Berry Counties. This amendment would allow a faster response for Amber Alerts to be issued if police believe a missing child to be in danger, in, to be in danger. Kent County, Michigan recognized the need for a specialized domestic violence court following six domestic violence-related homicides within three months in 2021. The court staffed by individuals knowledgeable about the intricacies of domestic violence aims to support victims and families, hold offenders accountable, and prevent future further homicides. Whereas, Washtenaw County hopes to improve safety and outcome for families exposed to domestic violence by having law enforcement change the way it responds to domestic violence calls by using lethality assessments in all domestic violence cases. Whereas, the mission of Family Court Awareness Month is to promote judicial education that would include training on domestic violence, child abuse, childhood trauma, coercive control, and post-separation abuse for all professionals involved in family court cases. Whereas, Family Court Awareness Month recognizes the need to incorporate evidence-based research into the court's decisions. This includes the, the adverse childhood experiences study. The research, this research highlights long-term effects of exposure to abuse in childhood and emphasizes the need for research, for research-informed and impartial decision-making to protect children's well-being. Family Court Awareness Month, whereas, Family Court Awareness Month aims to encourage collaboration among legislators, advocates, professionals, and the community to improve family court practices, ensuring they are guided by evidence-based research and prioritize the safety and best interests of children. Now, therefore, I, T.I. Shippers, Mayor of the City of Cadillac, hereby declare the month of November 2025 to be Family Court Awareness Month. We stand with families and children in advocating for safer, more informed family court system. This is for you.
Thanks for coming.
Shake your hand, thank you.
Thank you.
Step up to the mic.
Sure, is that okay? Yeah, yeah, I get to say that's okay. I think I get to decide that.
You've said a lot, and a lot of that was what I was going to say. Under the post-separation abuse, I would like to touch just a little bit on that for a couple of seconds. With our courts, they are, they are trained, but they are trained on domestic violence, physical domestic violence. It is not the same as verbal and emotional abuse. And with saying that, it is not acknowledged, and sometimes, most times, it's dismissed, and it's fallen as course of control with false allegations, perjury, and moving forward, a false narrative, and where the protective parent loses custody to the abusive parent, which is about 70% of the time. You said a lot of the statistics that I was going to say, so I appreciate that. And without educating the judges, we are limiting our children and the protection of our children.
Could you speak in the mic?
And we are putting them at harm without educating. And moving forward with Cadence Act, so this would be Cadence Act and Rowan's, this would educate the judges so that not only could we have their, the domestic violence and coercion more training and more in-depth training, we could also have more of the alert system, Amber Alert system expanded, so that children like Rowan do not fall to murder.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next we have a public hearing.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the city council, at this point, I'd like to introduce Teresa Waldo, our Community Development Director, who has a brief PowerPoint for us to introduce this item.
So, welcome. This presentation outlines Cadillac's application for the MISHDA Neighborhood Program Community Development Block Grant funding. We'll cover this project. It aligns with the community goals and research supporting the anticipated impact. Program overview. This is the neighborhood program. It invites units of general local governments to apply for CDBG funds. It supports local infrastructure and housing needs. The public hearing and input is a requirement of the MISHDA process. The My Neighborhood Program administered by MISHDA provides the funds to help local governments address critical infrastructure and housing needs, particularly in low and moderate income areas. The funding is vital for cities like Cadillac to modernize community assets and enable sustainable growth. The project summary. Cadillac requests $873,200 in CDBG funds. The public infrastructure upgrades are Chapin Street between Mitchell Street and Shelby Street. Cadillac Lofts Phase Two project will include approximately 52 units, 2,500 square foot commercial, and the local match of approximately, approximately $460,000. The Cadillac Lofts Phase Two, the Chapin Street. Public parking, sidewalks, water, and sewer infrastructure. Why infrastructure? The CDBG-funded infrastructure improves neighborhood conditions and business density, supports community growth and resilience. Impact on housing and economy. Like we said, the 52 new apartments, 2,500 square foot commercial space. It boosts affordable housing and local business. The CDBG infrastructure attracts additional investments. This project will deliver much-needed housing and create a vibrant new commercial space. The research shows that CDBG-supported infrastructure often leads to further, I'm sorry, further public and private investments, setting off a victorious cycle of growth and opportunity. Cadillac Master Plan alignment. Consists with Cadillac's Community Master Plan, prioritizes equal, quality, sorry, sustainability, income. I'm sorry, I have to start this over again. Cadillac Master Plan alignment. The consistence with Cadillac's Community Master Plan. It meets the MISHDA and HUD guidelines. Just skipped over that one, sorry. The proposal is grounded in Cadillac's Long-Term Community Development Plan, which focuses on equitable access to housing and services and supports sustainable growth. The project compiles with all state and federal guidelines. Expected outcomes. New permanent affordable housing, improved public infrastructure, safety and accessibility, new business opportunities and job creation, higher property values, community well-being, and improved quality of life. Conclusion, Cadillac's application leverages research-backed strategies. It strengthens infrastructure, housing, and the economy, and its long-term benefits for residents and businesses. Thank you.
So, now we will hold the.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, and, and a public hearing, sorry, I just told it was on. And a public hearing, you have five minutes to speak on this topic. Okay, if anyone has anything they would like to add, or? Seeing no one? Anybody at the table?
Yeah, I got a quick question for Owen. I think we spoke about this briefly earlier. Could you clarify to everyone, people here and out in TV land, the 400,000's already been here, Mark?
Yeah, so in 2020, as part of a bond issuance, there was a portion of that allocated to the public infrastructure improvements in that area. Part of the advantage is, especially in this project, is not only could, you know, a vast majority of the, of the project be covered by grant funds, but then the, the loan can be paid back with captured dollars. So, on a commercial property, you know, only about like 28% of the taxes are city tax dollars, so, and, and these have state capture as well, so it's almost like a secondary grant from the brownfield process too. So, these funds have been sitting on hand for, since 2020, earning interest, so it is about up to 467,000 as of the last month's worth of interest earnings, so. They are on hand, and have been on hand for several years.
Thank you.
And the city will retain ownership of the infrastructure, which is wa, water mains and sewer lines and all of that.
Hundred percent public infrastructure, yep.
Yes, public infrastructure, going to a private facility, but this is how public and private mesh in.
Yeah, sidewalks connect public or private facilities with public infrastructure, yep, all the time, so.
Thank you. All right, let me take a vote.
A motion?
Motion.
A motion, may I, any emotions?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to apply for the Community Development Block Grant administered through the MSHDA, Mission Neighborhood Program, which includes the commitment of the matching funds of $460,000 and authorizes, Marcus, special, city manager to sign as the authorized official.
Support.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls. Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. We have a few items this evening. The first one is a request regarding the appointment of a member of council to the zoning code rewrite advisory committee. City council, while back, approved moving forward with Progressive, which is our consultant that's gonna help us finish off the zoning code rewrite. We are putting together a work group that is gonna be meeting a few times over the next six months or so. There is a member of council that has reached out and mentioned that they are interested. He's currently not here, but if anybody else is interested, certainly, this should be the time to speak up. Otherwise, it would be helpful if council would support councilmember Ingalls going on to the, the committee. I don't want it.
You wanna make a motion to appoint him?
Sure. Make a motion to appoint Robert Ingalls to serve on the zoning committee rewrite advisory committee, which will, zoning code rewrite advisory committee, which will tentatively meet four times in the next 68 months, 68 months.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls. French?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, and this is one of those times where the person who's not here gets appointed to a committee, who actually wants to be appointed to the committee.
That's a good thing.
Will these be public meetings, or meet, just meet in private?
I don't believe these are public meetings.
Okay.
Yes, actually, they will be. Yep, they will be.
Stay corrected.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
I was gonna wait and see if Teresa jumped in, I thought I read that, yeah.
Keeping you on your toes, Teresa.
Yes.
All right.
And they will be held at the Well Field, usually, that's will be our main meeting point.
That's a great facility, yeah, yeah, it is. It's a good meeting place.
Okay, moving along, unless there's, okay. Next item, also from the council member that's not here this evening. There was a request to get just an update on the Cadillac Commons Facilities Management Plan as to where we are. We have with us tonight both our DDA Director and Main Street Program Manager Travis Owens, as well as the Chair of Downtown Development Authority, Steve Barnes. Travis has prepared an outline that goes over essentially the, the concept as it's currently being drafted. We do have copies available for the public, and we also provided copies to city council this evening. And Travis, without any further ado, if you wanna go to the mic.
Yeah, so you mentioned it, Marcus. Councilmember Ingalls had some questions. He requested this update at the last meeting. I appreciate the opportunity, as always, come down and talk about this. Because everyone has a copy, you know, the notes are available to you. I'll try and keep it very brief and focus on just a couple of the sections, starting with the overview here. One, that the DDA is in fact having conversations. We've stepped up and asked to have these conversations regarding the reservation policy for the Cadillac Commons because we're also in conversation about entering into a partnership agreement that would allow us to administratively and operationally manage those facilities, those rental facilities, and in return, we would make sure to reimburse the city for maintenance support at those buildings. To date, the DDA has invested over a million dollars in the Cadillac Commons improvements. It's a clear sign of our commitment to those facilities and just having that vibrant community space, and it seems like an opportunity for us to, with the addition of a director myself, take on that role and support the city. Currently, reservations, as well as the management of those facilities, is through city staff. As far as what we're looking at with the reservation policy specifically, we just noticed some issues. Some of them were brought up. For example, if there's increased competition with the upgrades, now that we have this year-round event venue space, if we have increased competition, a first-come, first-served system is gonna be tough to administer equitably. Essentially, we could get a host of applications on January 1st, and then how do we sort out who's going to get those reservations? Our rates in the rate table for the policy for the market building and the other buildings haven't been updated since 2017. And then, as I mentioned, we have those recent upgrades, including overhead doors, bathrooms, heat, other things that we want to account for, now that we've made the market a year-round multi-use venue. And really, it's about making sure that that wonderful community space is properly utilized. So, that's what we're looking into, into, into the future. As far as our timeline and next steps in this process, we've got three key components that we feel we need to figure out. One is the reservation policy itself. You know, how do we take reservations, who takes them, and then how do we figure out as far as prioritization, who gets access to the space? The second being the fee schedule, like I said, hasn't been updated since 2017. And then finally, that operational structure. We need to dig into the weeds and figure out how the relationship will work between the DDA and the city to manage those facilities. Our goal is to finalize and implement the new reservation policy by January 1 of 2026, and that's gonna allow us the opportunity we need for input, refinement, clear communication, and to seek the approvals we would need. And I guess finally, we'll just let you know on that timeline that we anticipate having a draft reservation policy to council for review before the next meeting on Monday, November 17th.
Thank you, thank you, Travis.
What is, what is the current rate for that, I'm just curious?
Twenty-seven dollars.
It depends on your classification, whether it's a one-time use, half-day or full-day use, or whether it's a subscription use. Are you doing it for, you know, once a week, twice a week, for a month in a row? No matter what classification you fall into, it's all very, very low. And the reasons for that was because, one, the building when we first started was still getting finished. Two, about a month or two or three after it opened, the automatic sides failed miserably and never worked properly. And then, and then it was always in a state of disrepair, and then it's been under construction again. So, you know, over the window that we've been open, there's always been, to a degree, some kind of significant interruption. The plan was to get people paying and used to paying something in the beginning, knowing that once things were finally up and running and humming, that we would raise it to a, essentially a market rate. But, no pun intended, of course.
And is this, is this for all the facilities, like the, the performing arts pavilion?
Yeah, we're looking at everything. Yep.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Look forward to seeing all that.
Thanks for your work on that, Travis and Steve.
Okay.
Okay, next item is a recommendation regarding the Local Development Finance Authority well-residual funds, and this is essentially some housekeeping financial matters that Owen, I think, will maybe help clarify. I know that we had LDFA last week, and basically, there's several hundred thousand dollars. The LDFA has a one account that needs to move to another LDFA account, and council is the legislative body that has to make that final call, so.
Yes, so the, the LDFA authority has three accounting funds, and one of those funds accounted for water sales to the power plant. And that well was built roughly in the same time that the, the power plant was built and the LDFA came on. And so, at this point, based on the years of that revenue being slightly ahead of, of. And, uh, so at this point, uh, based on the years of that revenue being slightly ahead of, of, uh, the expenses, we provided the maintenance worker. Uh, right now, there's about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars in residual funds. So in working with our auditors, they said if you're closing an accounting fund, we need governing body approval. So because it's, uh, an authority and the council, um, we went to the authority board last week. They unanimously approved the resolution to close the LDFA Utilities Fund, which is the technical name of the accounting fund where those activities were accounted for, and close that fund and transfer those proceeds into another LDFA fund. There's two other LDFA funds. One is, uh, where the TIF captures go for the LDFA, and the other fund accounts for the operations of the treatment process. So the proposal will be, um, to close that fund, transfer the proceeds into the same fund where the TIF proceeds go. Um, and as long as that passes the auditor's, um, test, um, that, that's the, the, the direction that will go. The phrasing of the motion that we had asked for indicates another LDFA fund, basically, a little bit more generically. That way, if there's something in the final recording of the entries to make that transfer, if they say they want one fund or the other, the motion will enable us to close it into either of the other two. That's why it's a little bit more generic. Um, there's four hundred and thirty thousand dollars on hand. Those funds will help offset the, the groundwater treatment and all of the things that have to be done, uh, on a regular basis to do that. It's about a three hundred thousand dollar annual operating budget every year. So those funds will help offset the costs of the authority and will be spent accordingly.
I have a question, hold on. Will it be up to the LDFA board to determine which account that goes into, or the auditors?
Yep, so, um, we, basically, I recommended to them to have it, uh, closed into the same fund where the TIF captured dollars are deposited and held, uh, because those are more, uh, one-time bigger uses versus just sending it into the operating fund. Um, so as long as that, again, meets the, the test of the auditors, that's the fund that it will, it will go into. And they, they supported that same recommendation.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
And again, we looked at it legally as well, feel like the funds belong to the LDFA authority and should continue to support their operations and shouldn't, we shouldn't consider transferring them anywhere else, so.
Well, then I'd make a motion to authorize closure of the LDFA Utilities Fund and transfer all residual funds to another LDFA fund.
Support. Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingles? French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you. Uh, next item is a request for support regarding, uh, the acquisition of complimentary tote bags for the fire department. Uh, in short, uh, the fire department, uh, was, uh, offered the ability to have their logo with a message on one side of a tote bag, uh, with an advertising on the other side of a tote bag that would be, uh, distributed at, at activities or events such as like the Child Safety Expo that happens, uh, annually on September eleventh, uh, because it would include, you know, an official branding of the city, that being the fire department patch or, or logo. Um, and I just felt more comfortable bringing this to city council for, for legislative support. Uh, the public packet includes a, a copy of the, uh, sort of current concept of what the bag would be. Um, but, you know, until they solicit and get the advertisers, we don't, we don't know entirely what all of it would look like. Um, but do feel comfortable with the recommendation.
Good idea.
Well, I'd make a motion to approve the acquisition of free tote bags from the MARC group at no cost to the city.
Support. Councilmember Ingles? French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, there added one.
Yep, um, this was a request that came in, uh, just after the agenda got pushed out regarding, uh, uh, temporary, uh, sign for the First Presbyterian Church Craft Show. Uh, they are looking at hosting a craft and vendor sale on Saturday, November twenty-fifth, uh, twenty twenty-five at two twenty-one East Terrace. Uh, they are asking for there to be a sandwich board style sign, uh, in our right-of-way, uh, on the corner of North Harris Street and Mitchell Street. Uh, the sign, uh, would be there, uh, for the day of the event. It's going to be approximately thirty-two inches by thirty-four inches, and it's going to simply state craft and vendor show today. Uh, there is, uh, image of, of the sign in the handout that we have provided as well. Uh, and it is, uh, a recommendation to approve the temporary sign permit for the First Presbyterian Church, uh, to place their sandwich board in the right-of-way, Saturday, September, uh, November fifteenth, in cor- uh, coordination with their show.
They've done this every year, haven't they?
Believe so.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the temporary sign permit application from First Presbyterian Church as presented.
Uh, second. Councilmember French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingles? Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay. On to the next.
Adoption of ordinances and resolutions.
Uh, so we, uh, we do have, uh, one this evening. Uh, this is a request, uh, to approve a resolution that'll enter into an easement agreement. Uh, this is, uh, pretty standard. It's a public utility easement agreement, uh, that, uh, is being required by the city, uh, that will be a part of the eventual Lakeland Apartments development on property owned by KMF Construction. Uh, this easement will allow the city to have public utilities, uh, run through the property that will ultimately provide for, uh, less environmental impact on the joining property, uh, and the public utility infrastructure that's also going to be installed and paid for by, uh, the developer. Uh, up to our specs, of course, then becomes owned by the city. And so we don't have the land, the land is owned privately, but the public utility easement allows for these, um, uh, for this public utility infrastructure to be placed there and then serviced and managed and maintained by the city, so.
I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution to enter a public utilities easement agreement.
Support. Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingles? French?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, that brings us to our second public comments. Again, this, uh, this, you could speak about anything, you have three minutes. Um, state your name and your, where you live. Seeing no one? Let's move on to Good of the Order.
Mayor, I do have one item I wanted to mention, if that's okay?
Yes.
Um, so this evening, uh, and I'll be brief. This evening, you know, we did have, um, a request for city council to approve, which council did approve, and that was to apply for, you know, uh, Community Development Block grant, to allow us to apply for one. And that's, you know, that's just one example, um, of many over the years of, of how our city, starting with city council and staff, are always looking for outside funding opportunities to help make things, to help make things a reality that otherwise just, just simply wouldn't be a reality. And my, uh, I gotta make my screen bigger, because I can't see. Um, but, um, the, you know, the reality is that just, you know, if you look at just dollars that we asked for in twenty-five. Now, we haven't gotten all of it, you know, over twenty-eight million that we just asked for in twenty-five. And so, you know, we'll get some of it, we're not going to get all of it. But it's just an example of, of the work that the, that the staff especially, you know, they put in a lot of time, energy, and resources, knowing that they have the support of the board to go out and do these things. You know, to, to bring dollars that otherwise might go to other places around the state, to try to bring them to Cadillac, to make our community better. And so I just wanted to, to mention that. And a thank you, obviously, to staff, you know, everyone that's here and, and those that, those that aren't here, so.
Also, I think what folks don't know is that when we get those dollars, we can't like then use them to fix the roads.
Right.
We have to use them for what's intended.
For whatever the grant's.
For whatever the grant is for. So we can't like, why are we spending money on this, we got money to do that. We, we're looking for money for the other stuff too. Thank you, thanks. Anybody else?
I'd like to say thank you to Cadillac Area, oh, Cadillac Area Visitors Bureau and everybody that was involved with our KISS weekend. That was one of the best weekends Cadillac's seen in a long time. At the football game, I talked to a couple that drove from Maryland. I saw Georgia license plates. I spoke to many people downtown from all over the state. That was well done and a very big deal.
Yeah, they did a great job.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah, it was a blast.
I'd like to make a comment and thank, I'd like to thank all the candidates that are running for city council because it kind of takes courage to put your name and your hat in the ring out there in, in this public forum, so. Um, uh, this being the last meeting before, uh, our election, I'd also like to remind voters who may have their absentee ballots sitting, uh, in, in a pile of junk mail to, don't forget to get it out and, uh, exercise your privilege to vote. And also, any other voters who will come to the polls to, um, it's a pretty short ballot, so, uh, it's not going to take too long to go ahead and, again, exercise your privilege to vote, and thank you, um, for that.
So, so, um, I, one thing real quick. Um, yesterday, um, a tour bus from Michigan State University came to town. Um, it was the president of the university and fifty faculty members. The new president of MSU is not from Michigan, so this was a bus tour of, uh, of Michigan, um, with the faculty members. And Cadillac was the first stop. And the reason Cadillac was the first stop was because of all the things that they had been seeing in the news with KISS, with stuff that the Visitors Bureau is doing. And when they came, they were, most of the people who were here have never been to Cadillac. And it was rainy, and it was miserable.
Yeah.
And they could not stop gushing at how beautiful our community is. And how, what a wonderful place it is. And I talked to many people who were like, wow, I'm coming back, this is, this is, and I, you know, we were able to just, you know, it was like bragging about a child, you know, talking about all the cool things that, that were happening in town, so. Um, and that, uh, so that also is kudos to the Visitors Bureau and everybody else who puts, the DDA, everybody who puts stuff out there about, you know, telling our glorious story about Cadillac. We're a wonderful community, and it's nice to see other people notice that.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, meeting is adjourned.